Hello Steve, how are you?
Good Hunter, how about yourself?
Very good, like the facial hair.
Yeah, yeah, I decided, you know, at the age of seventy-one, maybe it's time to go ahead and grow it. First time I've ever done it, so if I don't do it now, it won't happen.
That's right, well, I got, I bought your book.
No kidding, oh, thank you.
I bought your book, I've been fascinated by interurban since I was a kid. And I was visiting somebody out in Jogga County, some kid. And he pointed out back there, there was a railroad track in the urban, that's what I've been fascinated with it. And, you know, the under, the underbelly of the terminal tower had extra tracks for interurbans. And I thought, this is a really, but I can't figure it out, it's sort of, it's less well-known than underground railroad tra- trails.
It, as you can see, it had like a brief history, in one generation, people remember when I wasn't there, and they also saw it, its demise, so.
Yeah, came and went, you know?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, very, but still, it had a significant impact, that's kind of, that was the basis of the book.
Yeah, well, I've started to read it, I've enjoyed it, and next time, next time we get together, I'll have you sign it.
Okay, well, I'd certainly enjoy that, that's, yeah, all the proceeds go to the Northern Ohio Railway Museum, by the way.
Oh, good, and where is that located?
It's over in Westfield, actually, they've got a good collection of that, they're actually on the Cleveland Southwestern tracks. And they've got a, they've got a couple miles of that track, and eventually, they'd like to make it much more of an excursion line. Right now, they just do it like a little jog, but they're, they've been very active, they've, a lot of senior citizens there. And, but they also have some young ones, so that's, that's the good part.
So what's it called, the Northeast Ohio Railroad Museum?
Yeah, Northern Ohio Railroad.
Northern, Northern Ohio Railroad.
Norm goes by, yeah, they've got some of the cars that were over at Trolleyville. That also, like, Cleveland Transit had picked, our RTA had picked up for a while, they were able to get some of those, so, but that's, they've got a good, fairly good collection, but they got a lot of materials there. I think originally, it was, tried to collect and do a multi-volume work, and so I kind of started it off with this. And as, as most rail fans, they get, they get really into the weeds of inventory, car numbers, equipment. And I said, well, somebody needs to tell the basic business history and the story. And then, and then they can have all the, all the pictures and maps and, and equipment lists that they want.
Oh, yeah, and I've, there's, where we live now in Maryland, there's a railroad club in the, in the basement of one of the buildings. And you just see all of these, the minutia with which people, you know, do the, do the modeling of, of this route goes to here and goes to there, and you pull a car in and pull a car out, and unload and load, and oh yeah, 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 yeah.
Well, as you know, that's the burden of the historian to tell the story, why, why it's important. And, and thankfully, those rail fans are keeping a lot of the information alive, which is, that's the good part.
Well, one of the things that would be kind of interesting, and that fits into the vibrant neo-long-term idea, is improving connectivity, and we, we laid out, you know, some ideas connecting the parks, and then perhaps being more systematic about the underground railroad trails. But the, the, to the degree that the interurban routes are still there, or available, or haven't been privatized, might be available for some trail systems, it could help you, a great rails-to-trails, or rails-and-trails type of situation. Well, it kind of has to be laid out on a map, to your, to your point, it's got to be very simple. Say, here's, here's the remaining trackage, or remaining ridesaway, and here's the stuff that you'd have to reassemble somehow.
Yeah, and a lot of, at least for the, for the Cleveland Southwestern, eighty-five percent of it was private rideaway. That they had acquired, they operated on, but, but a lot of that went over to eventually, when Ohio Edison would take over, through the power companies.
Okay, well.
Yeah, since that, that was, that was a good part of their business up until nineteen, nineteen twenties, so, yeah, once they sold out the power interests to the Western Reserve Power Company, and then the successors that eventually sold out Ohio Edison. The reason I know this is, a lot of my dissertation was at the Ohio Edison Archives, the University of Akron, that's where all their materials at.
Oh, okay, okay. Are those ridesaway available for any sort of trails, or are they?
Very, very few of it, most of over a hundred years, the utility, they've used them for their purposes, yeah, you know, high-tension lines, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, you don't want to be biking under high-tension lines, particularly.
Not exactly the most scenic route.
No, 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 no. So how, how, how is life, are you still, you returned to being a county commissioner, correct?
Right, oh, yeah, yeah, I just, just upped again, and so, two thousand twenty-eight will be my, my last year, I'm going to be retiring, that's the plan. So, that, I've had enough years, you know, you get a certain age, like, okay, but I, I've been able to accomplish quite a bit after coming back from the legislature.
Good, 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 good.
Stirring the pot and causing trouble, getting things done.
Well, you always seem to be much more of a local politician than sort of lost in the sauce of the General Assembly.
Oh, my God, that, well, but that was an education, that really.
Oh, yeah, no, really, you do learn how thing, how the, how the.
How everything works.
As Vern Rife used to say, how the cow eats the cabbage.
Yeah, 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 it was an experience there, under the, I'll just say, householder years, so.
Under the tutelage of household.
Commissioner Hunter, can you hear me? This is Liz Farlick with NOAC, and I'm sorry to interrupt your conversation, I did just want to let you know that we are live streaming this meeting. We haven't started yet, but, and you're welcome to continue talking, but I, until we start, I just wanted you to know.
Cut us off when the meeting, when we have to, you know, just two, two old guys reminiscing here.
Yeah, well, I haven't said anything I haven't said publicly before, it's common knowledge.
I assumed as much, but.
Yeah, thank you.
Wanted to make sure you were aware.
No, I kind of figured, once I go live, it's like a live mic, so.
And you've been in the business long enough to know live mics can be a problem.
They can, they can, sometimes it's intentional.
Oh, yeah, I know, yeah, yeah. I think most of the times, at least at the national level, it's intentional, I think, you can't be that accomplished and that stupid.
Yes, you kind of wonder, you kind of wonder, yeah, 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 so I'll be giving, I, I'm glad you were able to join, because it, as, as you know very well now, you're much more adverse, conversant in this, and given your experience back in ninety and ninety-one, when you were president and the strategic plan, and you did the major reform project, reorganization, that was, you know, and I know that Chris Renee kind of brought me in, because he was talking about the two thousand one code of regulations update, and you were co-chair of that. We had, you know, a good group reviewing that, it basically, for this issue, was status quo, trying to maintain what had already been reformed. So, I think that's, you know, so I didn't have much, we have much more to offer, other than, you know, my, my own history with it, as well as knowing some of the back history.
Mm-hmm, you know, well, and, and being, you know, representing one of the smaller counties, a growing county, but, but, I mean, the whole Cleveland, Hioga County versus the out counties, it's good to have a voice from, from the suburban counties.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah. I just got a message on my, on my wrist, so, never mind.
Okay, okay.
The technology, you know how it is nowadays, you get able to get a call and just look up, you can look up the time and see who just messaged you, yeah.
Yeah, well, I've, I've, I've given up on my, my Apple Watch, it's like, I'm going back to an old Timex, it's like, it's too much, too complicated.
Well, I, I do, I do Fitbit.
Yeah, okay, well, that makes sense.
Yeah, that's, it's much smaller, the Apple Watch is still too big for me, I just read something small, but I keep track of my, you know, pulse rates and things like that, too.
Well, that's, that's always good, yeah, they.
And mileage, right? Great medical plan that basically gives us the benefit for a wellness plan, reduction in our, our, our out-of-pocket, if we participate in it, so. They keep track, you know, Big Brother's keeping track, or whatever of my steps, but that's fine.
Yep, that's okay, I'll be right back.
Sure.
I can just say thank you very much, both of you, for being here, the meeting's going to get started in a few minutes.
Okay.
Maybe even less than a minute, now that I see the chair coming my way.
Good, Grace.
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Good. Good to see you.
All right, good afternoon, everyone, I'd like to welcome everyone here today, I've got, I've called a meeting to order, I've got one oh four PM. And this is a special meeting of the Governance Committee, and let's take a moment to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. In compliance with notification requirements of Ohio's open meeting law, notice of this meeting has been publicly posted, and major public media has been notified. NOAC conducts its meetings according to Robert's Rules of Order. Actions during the meeting will be taken by voice vote. If any member feels the need to abstain from any vote due to a conflict of interest, he or she should state their intention to abstain when the matter is introduced by the chair for presentation for the record. Subsequently, that member shall not participate in any discussion of the matter for which a conflict exists. According to Robert's rules, absence from a meeting does not require a member to abstain from voting on the minutes. If the member still wishes to abstain, he or she should state their intention for the record. For the benefit of our guests from the public and the recording of this meeting, please be sure to speak into a microphone. Microphones can be turned on and off using the bottom on top of them. Okay, has anyone signed in to speak today, public comment? No, okay. Okay, do we have a Executive Director's Report?
No report to, of any great length, but I do want to advise the Governance Committee that testimony on House Bill four four five, which is the bill that is being proposed by Representative DeVilla and Stewart, they began this week with a sponsor testimony on Wednesday, so that was, that was opened up for discussion. Sponsors were there to present their legislation, and we will hear more about when the legislation will continue to move forward, and when we would have the opportunity for testimony.
Okay, very good, we'll monitor all that progress, thank you, Grace. Do we have any action items for the meeting today? Okay, we do have a presentation discussion item, we're going to be continuing to talk today about board membership, and the committee structure, and Grace, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and again, thank you to all of you for being here, I know it's a lot of commitment to come to a NOAC board meeting, both time and travel, so we appreciate your participation and your engagement. And thank you to our two guests, Hunter Morrison and Steve Hamley, both former presidents of the NOAC board, and both engaged in the development of the Code of Regulations, Hunter in the nineteen ninety-one version, and then Steve Hamley in the twenty-ten version, I believe. And so, I'm just going to quickly go through a couple of slides that will remind us of the discussion we had last time. And that's the current structure, really is a result of a strategic planning process that occurred in the fall of twenty thirteen, and determined that a review of the code should be conducted. It really took us about eighteen months to get through that entire process, from the beginning of the strategic planning process through the Code of Regulation. The task force was comprised of ten members of the board, and in fact, Commissioner Steve Hamley was one of those ten. We worked with BVU to facilitate that, and we were really working towards a structure that better reflected at the time, the needs and the desires of the NOAC board, to ensure they were more engaged in the process, and that the process allowed them to do more than approve documents or approve actions, but rather be engaged in their actual development. So this is the structure that came out of that process. What was really new about the structure was that there were not Finance and Audit, Planning and Programming, Policy, Governance, and External Affairs, those committees did not exist, those are standing committees of the board, and they were created for only board members to participate in, and to ensure that they're able to fully discuss all of the matters before they went to the board. The Executive Committee, which of course did exist, continues to be the overall oversight committee, and specifically relative to board action, was the clearinghouse for the agenda of the board to ensure that the standing committees have done their due diligence before it moved forward. I also bring this up a little bit today, in that we have been talking about trying to make the meetings more efficient, and particularly shorter, and we have been discussing, what is it called, Liz, help me. Okay, all right. Consent agenda, that's what I was thinking, so we've been discussing a consent agenda, and I just wanted to think, sort of say that the standing committees, I think, do a good job of reviewing information, but if we can make them even a little bit more pointed and robust, then maybe those items don't need to go in its entirety to the Board of Directors, and they can go through a consent agenda, because they've made it through those committees. And the Executive Committee could be the committee as part of its agenda setting to decide what could be consent agenda, and what could be something that needed to be discussed at the board level. So I just want you all to know that we are thinking about the structure and the purpose of the structure in determining a path forward to improve the experience of the board members and the outcomes at those meetings. Yes.
May I? Are you talking action item by action item, as opposed to just all, the whole agenda for any particular committee?
Good question, it's been presented to me both ways, so I've had some board members talk to me about an entire agenda for a committee being presented, and being presented by the chair of that committee, and then the board determining whether they needed any discussion, or just approving it as a consent item. So that has been shared with me, as well as the Executive Committee could determine in advance which items for each of the committees would want more discussion at the board level versus not, and then it could be structured that a consent agenda could be for all of the items of all of the committees, and then keep the ones that needed to be discussed outside of that, and could be for any of the committees. Certainly, we would define what committees they came from, but then it would be one action of a consent agenda versus five actions of committees, of, you know, consent agendas. So we'll, we'll talk about that further, but I did want, as we were talking through this committee structure, to let the Governance Committee know, we've been working through those issues, we've been talking to other board members who've got experience on different committees, I'm sorry, on different organizations where they have consent agendas, and we're working through that. So I want you to know that we're hearing you, and we are trying to, to work for a solution. The air quality subcommittee, transportation subcommittee, water quality subcommittees existed, as did the Bicycle Pedestrian Transit Council, Safety and Operations Council was new as part of a grant that we received from the federal government to increase our work in safety and operations, and ensure that it had a level of significance within the structure. We did add, as part of this process, business advisory, community advisory, we subsequently added rural, and subsequently added Emerging Leaders Council. An Economic Development Subcommittee, as you know, was not part of this original, original structure, but was recently added. So the majority of this structure is intact from the twenty thirteen changes. Some of it included things from the previous structure, and some of it now includes new things that have been added since. So it is timely that we are looking at this. Okay, so, we have been talking a lot about board membership, and the federal requirements for board membership is that the designation or selected of officials or representatives on a MPO board is determined by the MPO bylaws, and must consider the equitable and proportional representation of the population of the metro area, and include the following: local elected officials, officials of public agencies responsible for operating major modes of transportation, such as the public transit providers, and appropriate state officials like ODOT. And in our case, because we also have Water Quality two oh eight, we are required to have the EPA, as well as in terms of. have, um, the EPA, um, as well as in terms of local government, the largest wastewater treatment, uh, facility, which in our case is Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Current NOACA Board of Directors is defined in Article 4 of the Code of Regulations and, uh, the most current version was established in 2026 by resolution, I'm sorry, 2022 by Resolution 202206, which was based on the resolution in 2019 that codified the result of the census would automatically, based on formula, determine the structure of the board representation with the goal of representation to bring the board's discussion and decision-making the principal elected officials and regional administrators of the NOACA area concerned with transportation and environmental planning while assuring to the area's citizens an approximation of equal representation by population as reported in each decennial census. So that is what's there. I would also like at this time to bring up something else that I think the Governance Committee should, um, both be aware of and, um, perhaps, uh, we should schedule, uh, either a, a discussion either through our normal meetings or another special meeting. Um, but the idea of the criteria for a member to be on the NOACA board in order to, um, honor the decision-making, um, the principal, the decision-making for the MPO being the principal elected officials and regional administrators of NOACA concerned with transportation and environmental planning. Although that seems somewhat specific, it ends up being somewhat broad in January when we seat board members. The board members, not so much, uh, they're usually the elected officials and they are usually pretty clear, um, administrators. Uh, when we get to alternates, alternates in a, uh, in, in the code are supposed to essentially be the same type of representation that the board member is because they had the same responsibilities. But it's been, um, I think, a little loosely applied and we don't always have, um, representatives that are alternates, whether it be just the one-time alternate or a regular alternate that are either elected officials or, um, regional administrators concerned with transportation and environmental planning. In some cases, they have been, we have allowed, um, for some time, since I, I know that, uh, since I have been here, uh, we have, um, essentially allowed, um, folks to be the alternate that have an affiliation with that jurisdiction, um, but not necessarily an employee. So they have been board members of various segments of, um, uh, the county, like a county planning commission, but not necessarily an employee. And that's something that, um, and in some cases, a one-time alternate has been prescribed to us that has been neither. Um, so I do think that's something that the Governance Committee should take up and we should develop stricter criteria to ensure that the alternates meet the criteria of the board membership. So just get that a little tighter. And if we want it loose, then we can make it loose, but then I'd like to make sure that that's applied across the organization and not just to this community or that community because this one happens to be abiding by that and understands the, um, implications and is taking that very verbatim and others are not taking it as verbatim. So just wanna bring that up that I'd like to have that discussion. I think it would be appropriate for us to move forward, um, at the very least in November, at our November regular meeting because, um, I would like to be prepared for the January, um, seating of the board. And so, m- we may not be able to conclude entirely in November, so that would perhaps suggest another special meeting. Uh, but it is something that we have had, um, some issues with and I would like to be able to respond more clearly to the board members as to who they can appoint as alternates.
Is it, uh, loosely written regarding the alternates in the Code of Regulations right now or?
I don't know, Liz, if you can pull up that specific section, um, but the intent is clear that it's meant to be the same requirements as the board, but it, it's a little looser language. And I can recall back in this 2013 timeframe when we were, um, reforming the membership, that discussion did come up, but, um, it, it, it did not move forward, um, i- in any way. So I, again, just wanna bring it up.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, you know, cause we do see some alternates on a, on a very regular basis here, so.
Liz, if you can, um, sorry.
So a question on there.
Yeah, well, we'll take questions while.
Yeah, while she's looking. Um, I just think it's something we need to think about because I think for continuity and consistency.
I'm sorry?
Oh, can you hear me? Sorry. Um, I just think it's something we really need to think about because I think for continuity and consistency, um, so again, just say in Cuyahoga County, we have a mayor from a certain city who's appointed. I think it's a different communication if their alternate is someone who works in their city versus their alternate having to be another elected official who works in another city. And I'm not saying we don't wanna go there, I just think we need to really think about, you know, granted they're representing not just their city, but they're representing the entire region, but it, just the communication and the, you know, I can't be there today, but I've been at the other three meetings. It's just something to think about.
And that's why I wanna have the discussion and that was part of why we haven't made any changes like that. But I, I think I'm more concerned about not so much employees of elected officials, um, although they probably should be a little more consistent, which actually I think we've done a really good job of over the last 10 years where, um, I, I know that when I first came here, there were probably these name tents, if anybody remembers, name tents on top of name tents on top of name tents because there were so many alternates that you would, there was a bench. And we stopped that and people are really good about just having one alternate and that consistent communication. But alternates are not always employees. And that's where we start to say, well, if it, if it's not an employee in this particular case, why does it have to be an employee for everybody else? You know, why can't they put a business person on this board? Or, and those are the kind of queries that we've had over the years and trying to administer this per the Code of Regulation has been a little bit, um, tough. We, you know, we try to administer it the way it has been administered over, you know, over the decades, um, but it, it does need some clarity, so.
And, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
One thing I would add, as Liz is looking it up, is I wanna, I'm curious what the Code of Regulation says, but the last two screens that I've seen has said elected officials and regional administrators, right? Private, the prior screen said concerned with transportation. Our Code of Regulation says transportation and environmental planning. Whether I particularly agree with the topic or not, we've now added economic development to the mission of NOACA. That doesn't fall under transportation or environmental planning, so either a board member declared or a alternate that's involved in economic development also wouldn't necess- necessarily fall under that. And I, and the, and the other thing is, is when you talk about employees, absolutely for a board member to send an employee, whatever it is on their staff, that's easier to then be able to communicate that information back, right? You're there on my behalf. My alternate is a township trustee. While he and I make counsel and discuss things on where we are, he does not report, you know, so I think that's also where I would like some clarification. If, if we want elected officials, we want elected officials. If we want regional administrators in the areas that NOACA is concerned with, then we want regional administrators where NOACA is concerned, you know?
Exactly.
Sending an employee.
Yeah, no, and that's exactly the point. There's different ways to look at this and even the Code of Regulations is not consistent, um, from section to section. And to, to, to further elaborate on your point, um, one of the things that has been coming up for discussion and it has particularly been poignant in this House Bill 445 discussion, NOACA board, and actually at this point, all MPOs in the board are being, uh, referred to as unelected boards. Unelected, unaccountable bureaucrats is usually the phrase that I'm hearing and that's largely because they're saying they're not all elected officials on this board. Now, the federal government doesn't require them to all be elected officials. Um, they do, um, allow and encourage, um, folks that have expertise in the area. So we wanna keep that in mind, but again, I think there's just a lot going on, particularly with that 445 and I, I really, um, I, I, I say, i- i- it makes me, um, really concerned when I hear that the impetus for legislation at the state level is because an MPO board is unelected, unaccountable officials. And that's just not true. The majority of the board is elected, although they do talk about when the alternates come, they're not elected. And again, that's okay as long as they have that expertise that is being, you know, requested. And so I just like us to sort through that and it's exactly to that point. I don't know which way is the right way, um, but I do want clarity from the Governance Committee and the board so we can administer this in a way that is consistent and that we can, uh, answer questions from legislators or the public or we can start presenting ourselves in a way that, um, reflects the, uh, membership as it truly is.
Uh, Jim?
Yeah, have you, uh, viewed other MPO's language on this topic?
Um, most of the language does follow the federal language, but I do know there are variations as well and that is one of the things that we need to closely look at before, um, the Governance Committee has a further discussion. Yes, we will gather up that information and present it to you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Real quick before Liz reads what the current is, for us to make any changes going into 2026 in January, this would have to be approved by the full, is there a full board meeting in December, correct?
Depends, depends on what section, cause there's also, at that board meeting in January can be approved as part of the roster and the seating of the representatives. So there's a possibility that it could still be done in January.
But still January?
Right.
But to that point, it's gotta come out of the Governance Committee by November?
Yeah, we have a.
Say December. If we, if we choose to take action in January along with the seating of the board, then I'd say the Governance Committee absolutely has to have it wrapped up by the end of December because most of the appointments that are made, that are given to us are made, um, in early January when commissioners take their, uh, commission meeting.
Wouldn't the full board need to approve the changes before the slating of the board in January?
Right, so we would put it on the agenda before, so that item would happen before and then there would be the seating of the members. But we would need the recommendation of the Governance Committee in December so we would know to advise board members of the criteria.
I, I guess, logistically, I'm just wondering if the board member at the beginning of the January meeting is still part of the current board, that would be voting yea or nay, then they may or may not be allowed to be slated for the 2026.
Again, I think that's, the Governance Committee would be, i- if the Governance Committee would want to pursue this and usually the board does take the recommendation of committees, then a notice would go out to the members immediately upon that decision being made by the Governance Committee, letting them know that this is the direction we'd want to go and that they should select their alternates or their members based on this criteria. And we, of course, um, receive all those for several weeks in January. I mean, we're oftentimes even negotiating it, um, or, or asked, begging for it, maybe is, is the more accurate word, um, you know, the day before the board meeting. Um, so, so oftentimes when we have that roster, it has been changed six times since we gave it to the board because people keep changing their membership. So it's, it's a rather fluid, would I, would I prefer it in December? Yes, I would.
I like that idea.
I would prefer that. If we're willing to meet.
Let's go.
We are willing to meet and make that determination by the December board meeting, it makes my life.
Yeah.
Liz's life and staff's life way more easy.
And forgive me, I'm from a county that had an issue with one of the alternates on this topic, so I, I understand the conversation. All I'm saying is, we have a full board member in Decem- full board meeting in December, correct?
Yes.
And we have another Governance Committee meeting scheduled for November.
November.
That is correct.
So then, let's get some work done. Okay, sorry.
I like that.
Okay, so this is a section on alternates, um, in the code and it is in Article 4, I should point out, which, um, requires ratification. Uh, "Each person who is a member of the Board of Directors shall designate an alternate to act in the absence of such a member. Alternates shall possess full powers in all matters which come before the Board of Directors. Each alternate shall be considered a board member with respect to all actions taken in capacity as an alternate, including any duties as an executive committee member. Designation of an alternate shall be in writing and must be submitted to the Board of Directors. Each designation shall be effective for no more than one year from the date it is submitted to the Board of Directors. Each person who is a member of the Board of Directors may revoke or modify the designation at any time in writing and submit it to the Board of Directors." So alternates.
So alternates.
Stand in the place of board of.
Right, in the place of board, so it's not, there's no criteria specifically assigned in that section. It, previous legal counsel has said that it refers back to the board member because they're acting instead of the board, that their, uh, criteria should be whatever the board's criteria is. But I'd like that to be clear.
I, I, I agree because there is no requirement for elected official or regional administrator as it pertains to the alternate. So if an elected.
With silent, it is silent, right?
Okay.
I, I think, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I just, I, I'm sorry, silent meaning it's not spelled out.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, but there is no spelling out of what, that's what the bylaws say, if we want it to match, we match. I get that, yes, in the past, counsel may have contributed it one way, if I, as I've learned in government, three attorneys will have seven opinions, so, uh, no offense, Liz. I just, yes, it needs to be, it needs to be crystal clear. By November.
That would be helpful. I appreciate that, so.
Just one other note, um, so because the city of Cleveland has a certain number of board members, I mean, you would not be able to fill your board with elected officials unless it was all of counsel and the mayor, so right there, there's a challenge, I think, by, if we had to go that direction.
But I think, you know, the, again, federal legislation and even NOACA's bylaws has the, um, the, the, the language, um, allows for the director of the Planning Commission.
Right.
The, um, language allows for the director of Public Works. The language allows for those positions. Um, it would not allow a, 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 a person who, um, is, I don't know, the, the director of Parks and Recreations perhaps would not be the most appropriate person to put on the board. But, you know, we're, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Chief Operating Officer that deals with the infrastructure appro- you know, so I think i- it can be managed, um, with a little bit more clarity, but still retain the intent of those communities to have their representatives.
So forgive me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
For my dumb questions. As I'm looking here, the board members are broken down by Cuyahoga County Government, regional authorities, the Cuyahoga suburban regions, which appears to be mayors outside of Cleveland, and then City of Cleveland, which obviously has different department heads, to your point, planning, capital projects, et cetera, et cetera. But then it also has the council members. So I don't know how many council members are there in?
There are four.
In the, but in the, there's 17 total Cleveland City Council members, right? So to that point, I mean, I've.
I'm sorry, um, an alternate to the mayor wouldn't, there's no other elected official on the administrative side.
Yeah, fair enough. I'm just saying to fulfill the eight seats for City of Cleveland, there are 17 council members. I get that the, the mayor, there's only one in the mayor's office, but I don't know, do the department heads and everything else that report up, that's part of the mayor's office or is that part, right?
Everybody reports up to, all the departments report up to the mayor.
Okay, okay.
And the objective for the city, the objective for the City of Cleveland's membership has been 50% from the, uh, mayor's administration and 50% from council.
Okay, okay, so four of the seats are council seats. By my math, there's 13 other council members. By my math, there's thirteen other council members that could be alternates.
And they are, council actually does have the council as the member and the council as the alternate. So, that was, yeah, they, they.
Mayor's office, there's the mayor, and then the, let's call it three department heads as the other three seats, okay. Okay. Out of curiosity, how many other employees are in the mayor's office and the other departments?
Well, there's, there's, directly under the mayor, there's senior strategists, and then there's chiefs, which, you know, Chief of Operations, Chief of Integrated Development, and so on. So, there's a level of chiefs. Um, and the directors, which you see here, Director of Capital Projects, report up through the chiefs to, to the mayor.
Okay.
You know, as I look at the City of Cleveland's membership, I actually, right now, knowing who they are and who they're representing, I don't see any issues with the City of Cleveland's representation. So, I, I, you know, I, I think that going through this exercise, the City of Cleveland actually could probably be used as, you know, sort of a, um, an example, that's a positive example of how that can work.
And I, and I wasn't disputing that point, I was just responding that if there's only one elected official, but we have the capability. Yeah, half.
In some cases, it may be harder to do only elected officials if that.
Well, in your, in, in the case of Cuyahoga County, because you have an executive, you have the same issue, where you, you have elected officials, but they are council.
But that's it.
And that's a different branch of government, right?
One elected official period, right, so.
So, um, okay, going back to then, um, thank you very much for indulging me in this conversation, and we look forward to further discussing and putting something in place. And I really appreciate the, um, the, what would I call it? The ambition of Commissioner Beverage that we will get this done in December, love that.
If I gotta make a forty-five minute drive downtown, I might as well get something productive.
Very good, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, James?
You know, this is a small group, we can travel, we come, we come see you.
Hey, for lunch.
Okay, uh, current NOACA Board of Directors has been based on that proportional representation. We currently have forty-six voting members, one of them being ODOT. Uh, so there are only forty-five voting members that are based on population. And the other two that are non-voting are also state representatives. This is the formula that we have developed, that is included in the Code of Regulation as one of the appendices, and it is reflected in the document itself, that this is the formula that is used once the census is taken every ten years and the seating happens. That results in this right here, which is what was used to seat the board members this decade. So, you start with the premise that we have forty-five officials on the board that need to be allocated across five counties. And within Cuyahoga County, they further divide that up between Cleveland and Cuyahoga County. But Cleveland and Cuyahoga County are counted as one in relationship to the other counties. So, there's the regional population of two-point-one million people. One-point-three million of them is Cuyahoga County, the remainder are the other four. So, in doing this calculation, um, the differences between the number of seats versus the, um, number of seats that you would have based on population are the last three columns. So, the third from the last is the board seats as a part of population. So, they are all, um, they are not all whole numbers. You've got eight-point-oh-three, nineteen-point-two-three, two-point-oh-six, five-point-oh-one, six-point-seven-four, and three-point-nine-three. Thus comes the word approximation. We're going to approximate the population, and we're going to round off the City of Cleveland to eight. Uh, Geogga has its base of three, because that is in the Code of Regulations, that, um, the minimum for a county is three, so rather than the two, they get the three. Lake is pretty close to five, they're, you're pretty much right on it. Um, and then seven is, it's rounded up a little bit, and then Medina is pretty close to being right on it, too. And so, one is taken from Cuyahoga, because they should have nineteen-point-two-three, and they only get eighteen. And basically, that is how it works out in the formula that in order to seat the forty-five members and have a basis of three minimum for each one, this is what it looks like.
So, I'm going to ask the question, and I didn't do the math myself. What if we added one board member? How different would that make that percentage be? Because basically, Cuyahoga County is giving a board member to Geogga to meet their minimum, right? But if there were one more added, um, I just wonder how that would change.
We could run that, um, I, 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 what did I say, Liz, before we entered in this room? I said, if I were Cuyahoga County, I would probably want this, so I, we need to be prepared for this question. Yes, we can run those numbers and, and, and present that. It would require that extra seat to be, I mean, that would change it a little bit, but because they're so close now, I don't know that it would change anybody else's.
That's what I was curious about, right, is would it change anybody else's? I, I'd just like to know. I feel like when we had this conversation at the last board meeting, there, there was a reference to, maybe we were two or three down, um, and that really had me concerned. One down is not.
Right, and I.
End of the world, but I'd like to just know.
Yeah, no, and, and let me clarify. The reason sometimes people talk about two or three being down is because the regional officials are often disputed. I don't think you could dispute the RTA, the Regional Transit Agency, does represent Cuyahoga County, just like Lake Tran represents Lake County. The Port Authority, although you can dispute that it serves the entire region and not just Cuyahoga County, it is the Cleveland-Cuyahoga County Port Authority, and the board members are appointed by Cleveland and Cuyahoga County. So, that is often looked at as a regional, but yet it is counted towards Cuyahoga County's, um, number. And then the Regional Sewer District, uh, who is on the board because of our water quality two-oh-eight responsibilities, happens to come from, or be headquartered, or mostly serving Cuyahoga County, but does branch into Geogga County and some other places. So, sometimes those are disputed, which is why Cuyahoga County sometimes, um, reflects, um, that it is three short in terms of membership, or two short, depending on how you count one or the other of them. But in terms of the formula, I have never seen it go, um, higher than just one short. I've seen it, in different variations of the analyses, even go up to like one-point-eight-six, which is almost two, but not quite two, because you can't divide people, um, but it, it's never been more than one person.
Do I need to add something?
Yeah, just, just so I'm clear, so are you saying, um, the Regional Sewer District, RTA?
And the port.
And the port are all included in Cuyahoga County's numbers?
Correct.
So, of the eighteen members?
Those are three.
Three of those are that.
Correct. So, only fi, fifteen of them then are the suburban mayors and county council and county administration.
Okay.
So, what are the three under Ohio?
The three under Ohio, so one is ODOT.
Right.
Uh, which is, uh, voting, um, and doesn't, but does not need to go into the population mix. The other two are non-voting, one is the Turnpike and one is the EPA. So again, just bringing all this to your attention to answer some of the questions you posed last time, and to give you a better picture of what we are looking at when we look at membership, and why it is the way it is, um, to give you, um, that background for any changes that are proposed or any direction, um, that we would like to go in.
That's a great chart.
I worked all day Saturday on that.
Ah, there you go. Okay.
Okay, uh, moving on then, uh, this is the list of board members. Um, and so, Cuyahoga County, as you see, it's got the county government, the regional authorities, which again, have been disputed over time, but, uh, have continued to remain under Cuyahoga County. And you know, at the, I, I would like to make the statement, though, at the time that GCRTA was added to the board, um, they were representing public transit, as is noted in the federal legislation. But Lake Tran was not on the board at the time. So, I think there was the feeling that they're covering the seat that is sort of required for public transit, why should that count against Cuyahoga County? But it has been under Cuyahoga County, um, and continues to be under Cuyahoga County. And now that Lake Tran, um, they came on the board, board probably ten years ago, there is, I think it is not debatable anymore.
Yeah, I mean, Lake Tran drives every day to downtown Cleveland, so.
That too, yeah. Okay, um, so any questions, uh, then we go to the discussion. So, um, kind of trying to get back at, uh, what is it that we want, um, to do with the membership? And before maybe we even get into that, um, maybe we'd like to hear from our guests.
Yeah, we've got, what, Hunter Morrison and, and Steve Hambley?
Hambley, and Hunter Morrison, we heard from at the last meeting, who gave us, uh, some good background on regionalism and the organization and the formation of the, or the revision of the Code of Regulation that is the basis for the one we have now in nineteen ninety-one. And then, as Steve Hambley has told me, uh, he considers himself the caretaker after Hunter's version of the, um, the Code of Regulations was approved in that early nineties timeframe.
Let's see, I see Hunter's picture on the screen. Hunter, are you, are you there?
Yes, I am, yeah.
Did you have any further that you wanted to add from last week's? Or do you want to move right to Steve to give him, uh, the opportunity to speak? Maybe just giving Steve a little bit of a, a summary of what you spoke about last time?
Yeah, uh, excuse me, last time we talked about, uh, the, the nature of the, of NOACA as a council of governments. Um, and, um, of the four MPOs in, um, Northeast Ohio, um, NOACA and Eastgate are the two that are structured as, uh, inter-county councils of governments. And that the big challenge we faced in the nineties was to answer Commissioner Mary Boyle, Cuyahoga County Comit, Commissioner Mary Boyle's question, why do we need NOACA? And, um, it came back to the, the, the fact that NOACA was, and was reaffirmed as a, a voluntary association of, of the five counties, uh, each of the county commissions signed on. And the question of proportionality of equity across, um, the counties, because of the differences in population, was one that the, uh, board structure, uh, attempted to, um, to, to address. And clearly, it's been refined over, over the years. I just took a look at that last slide, and I think it's, it's a very broadly representative group and brings together, um, uh, key actors of the two, the two fixed route, um, transit agencies in, in, um, in the five counties, uh, Cuyahoga County and, and, um, Lake County are represented. The Cuyahoga County's membership links it to the structure of the Cuyahoga County Planning Commission. And it seems, um, on reflection, to be a, a pretty good, uh, representation of the, of key actors and other, um, uh, and entities that are involved in governance, uh, within the, uh, within their respective counties. And the question always is, uh, is it, is it fair? Do the members feel that it is fair? Uh, and I think it's appropriate that, uh, every ten years or so, you, this body has had this discussion, and Steve, um, took it from that original structure where we, where we attempted to deal with this vastly different, um, population between Cleveland, Cuyah, Cuyahoga County and the other counties, um, and come up with something that's fair and workable, um, and then refine it further. But I'm, 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 I'm glad that the, the, the discussion continues as the population, um, in Northeast Ohio, in the five counties shifts, uh, as organizations, uh, emerge, uh, and as your role has, has, uh, has grown. Uh, as I said to the last meeting, Eastgate, uh, with the exception of HUD, um, which does not operate in the same framework, but Eastgate is a, is a sort of a full-service council of governments, is an MPO in water quality, air quality, and economic development, even the Appalachian Regional Commission, all, um, within the same structural umbrella. And, um, NOACA recently, by, by being designated a economic development, uh, district by, uh, EDA, has got, you know, additional duties, um, and I think those are all reflected. So, as duties have changed and the population has shifted, um, new actors come on, you have to revise it from time to time and look at it. But ask, uh, continue to ask the question, is this a fair and equitable, um, and, and workable structure? And I think, um, what we did in the nineties worked for that period, what, what Steve chaired in the, in the two thousands, represented an effort to update that, and what you're doing now is to, is to reaffirm, um, and readjust. And so, um, uh, I hope that that continues as a, in the same spirit of collaboration, regional collaboration that these other two efforts, uh, manifested themselves.
You know, Hunter, uh, I mean, in your opinion, uh, with your experience and all with NOACA, do you believe our structure right now is fair and equitable?
It, it looks to me, um, you know, fairness is in the eye of the beholder, but, uh, in terms of the, um, um, effort to, 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 um, bring in from each county the key, key actors involved in, in government and, and transportation, in particular, like capital planning. And then, where you have a rather elaborate structure in Cuyahoga County, planning with different regions and districts, it's not an arbitrary choice of, of elected officials. These people are, come from the different, uh, districts that are the districts of the County Planning Commission, uh, which was, was restructured about the same time as we did the work, um, in the nineties, under the leadership of Commissioner Boyle, where we flipped from a, from a, uh, regional planning commission or county planning commission, and wanted to make sure that every sector of a complex county was represented, uh, in the actions of the, of the body and the staff would be taking. And that, the fact that that is, that idea, that structure carried into the NOACA board, I think is very, very positive. Uh, but yes, I, from, from, from some distance, it looks fair to me. The question is, does it, is it fair, does it seem fair to the members? Currently, um, uh, uh, the board currently managing the organization. But I think the point in all of this was that these were, these were deliberative and, and thoughtful discussions reached across. And then, you may recall, or you may not recall, but the discussions in the nineties were, were pretty pointed, because of the way in which we came to this point with the collapse of the, of the, uh, structure of NOACA, with the actions of the, of the, uh, executive director at the time, and a real sense of unfairness and unbalance. So, we paid a lot of attention to getting everybody at the table and talking this thing through. And I know Steve did the same when we revised, revised it, so. Uh, that's an important factor, that, you know, you have to talk amongst yourselves to get to a point that, that it's, that it works for, that it works for you in, within your county and within the five counties as a whole.
Absolutely. We sure appreciate you being here, uh, with us, Hunter, and thank you for your, uh, comments and opinions. And I, I think we've got Commissioner Hambley here as well.
Yeah.
Welcome, welcome.
Yeah, thanks for.
Yeah, thanks for the invitation to be here. And I agree with Hunter on many of the points. Certainly there actually is a long history, even going back to when it was seven county regional government, the MPO and involved Summit and Portage County. The issue of membership and governance and so forth, structure was visited many times. If you look out throughout its history, it had lawsuits, it had various entities threatening to pull out Cleveland, Cuyahoga, Summit, Portage at one point in time, all had passed resolution and decided they weren't going to pay their dues. And so those, it was a test of the structure. And as Hunter pointed out too, that it was that critical time in 1990, 91, subsequent to the Pizzadaz years, as well as some might not remember too, that some of the board members were indicted as well in some of that. And so there was a major restructuring and reorganization that Hunter as president to help lead in 1991. Actually, if I could correct you, Grace, RTA, Lake Tran and Regional Seward were a board member, became more members in 91. So actually, Lake Tran was, was involved there, going all the way back to then as a voting board member under that restructuring. But it was, I, I, I think Hunter's got it right. I think that the fairness issue certainly is important. It's revisited every time because of that proportionality. There was a mechanism at one point in time called the weighted vote that was, you had board seats, but then under certain, certain, certain rules that you could bring certain issues. And then everybody would have a proportional vote based upon population for various reasons that that was removed a number of years ago. But it comes down to is the test of the structure is not only the ordinary business of the organization tested, but actually those stressors, those projects or those issues that come up that there's significant difference of opinion between the members. And that's the real test of that. And that's what we've seen, I guess, many times where the, the issue of representation once again plays a very important role, critical role in who decides what. That's why, and then I'll just point out too, in 2001 is when actually Hunter and I co-chaired the code of regulations update. And we had members, one member from every, that had been former presidents of the board, part of that regulations update, both Lorraine, Giaga, Cuyahoga, Lake, and of course Hunter representing Cleveland and myself from Medina. And we did the update and frankly, it was at that point, as I characterize as a caretaker of the reforms of 1991 to kind of maintain that. Over the years, it's, it's been tweaked and modified as we've run into projects or issues, interchanges and so forth, where these issues came up. And at this point, we, we have taken deliberative efforts, NOAC as an organization, to try to continue to balance that and try to make it fair and representative, recognizing that not only are the issues that come before us, but the population numbers change. And now that you have expanded the interests and the operations of the organization involving economic development, obviously those are things that need to be considered when it comes to membership on board and involvement in the process. So I'm willing to, you know, like I said, it's, there's a lot of material out there. If you look at the old newspapers and so forth about periodically, when we got in, about every decade, we would get into these discussions. And, but ultimately they ended up being resolved and, and the business of NOAC would, would continue on in a, in a, in a positive way to oversee the capital improvements of transportation, environmental, environmental policies and planning and as well as now other, other issues involving economic development.
Very good, thank you, Steve. Do the board members have any questions for our guests at all? I think, Grace, you have something?
I'd like Commissioner Hambley to speak a little bit more to ratification. That's been a question that has been brought up at the governance committee about whether or not ratification should continue. And, and so I, I know that you've got some important perspectives on that. Maybe Hunter does as well, but I know I've talked to him.
At one point in time, we had to, actually every change of the code of regulations required a unanimous vote of the, you know, the underlying principle, there was a creation of the five counties. And so that every entity had equal opportunity to ratify those changes. It then ultimately was reduced and through the various changes to just talking about the composition of the board. That was seen to be the most critical issue that would require ratification. And I think the consensus certainly was amongst us, smaller counties, the counties that are outlying, Cuyahoga County, we just, going just with a majority, might undermine the, if you will, the rights and the interests of a small county who had had a difference opinion. Certainly when it comes to structure and who represents those communities was sought to be an important consideration to protect, to protect those interests rather than having a majority overwhelm a minority interest. So those of us that come from the smaller counties have, and typically I champion that idea that it protects our rights to be able to determine who represents our county.
Very, very good. Yep, Commissioner.
Just the counterpoint to that is that, as I've said, if Lake or Giaga or any other county wants to change, not the proportionality, not anything like that, but just what seats are filled, you know, we all have different structures. Giaga County has three commissioners. Lake County has the three commissioners, an engineer and Lake Tran. Medina County has what? A commissioner, a township representative, a municipal, right? We all have different, I'm simply saying, I feel the counties individually should have the autonomy to make that decision amongst themselves as to who represents themselves here. I'm not advocating for, you know, obviously changing the board composition of all 46, 48, 45 board members or whatnot. Absolutely should have to be ratified across the board, right? Those types of changes. But within that county's numbers, once the entire board sets it, I just, I just feel that we have the situation right now where there's a desired change that necessarily isn't getting approved through all counties. And I just think that that would erase that issue, so.
Well, I, I was sure Medina County actually is, the way it, as you can see, the code of regulations outline, and it talks about a municipal representative, a township representative. Those were, those were inventions that, well, we brought it forward in like 1999, if I recall correctly. Originally it was three commissioners and a county engineer. In fact, at one point in time, our county engineer actually paid the dues, believe it or not, the commissioners had convinced him, he had the budget for the entire county because it was transportation planning. It's since changed, but.
Start that for all counties, please.
Pardon me?
Thought that I was being funny.
Oh, okay. And so at that point, we changed because it was a consensus in the governance of the, of our county, that the commissioners would, in a sense, designate one of the seats for municipalities and one of the seats for the township, only because our alternates were, tended to be one commissioner. We also had one township representative as an alternate to one of the commissioners and a city representative as an alternative to one of the commissioners. And we decided, just why don't we allow the jurisdictions to make that determination? And so that's how we came to arrive at, I, and then I got that basically was approved by the, by consensus of, I'll just say ratified by all, all, all the, all the parties.
But, oh, Steve, so question on that. But isn't it true that if, let's just say, let's use our county for example, if, if our county wanted to roll like one of the other counties in here, let's say like Lake County, that you've got all the, don't you have the three, don't you have all three?
Giaga.
Giaga? Okay, Giaga, you've got all three commissioners on, on, on this board. So would, at some point in time, Medina County, if you wanted to roll that way, would you be allowed to do that and have that flexibility? I think that's what Morris is getting at.
Well, I understand, I, I guess that that's the issue and the question is, is whether, you know, whatever the proposal is to be ratified. I, I've not been involved in the current, you know, conversations. I know Aaron Harrison, originally we were hoping both of us would be there and he could answer the question for me, since I've been his alternate. And I'll just, you know, frankly, this is one of those, as those of us that are commissioners know, you kind of defer to the wisdom of the, of the main person and just, I just let Aaron let me know when he wants me to jump in on the NOAC stuff. I, I'm on the CCAO board, so I kind of pay attention to what's going on more down in Columbus and, and the mischief that's going on in the general assembly that we have to monitor so closely. So I, I've not paid attention as much as maybe I should have as to the conversation as to the changes that Lake County is seeing or that Giaga County is, is advocating for. But I would imagine it's, it would be similar in practice to put that proposal out. And of course then, if you will lobby each of us as to approving that change.
Well, if we go back to kind of first principles or how we thought about it when we were answering the question of Mary Boyle, how do we, what are you, what is this organization? Why do we need it? And we determined that its structure was really a council of governments between the five counties and that the, there had to be some rough equity proportionally in terms of the population. But within each county, the determination for who should, who should fill the seats was largely left to the county commissioners because it was their, their ballgame. So if one county wanted to be, all three commissioners are there and the county engineer, that's fine. If it's a different configuration because there's a transit agency and you want to have townships represented and, and larger cities represented within the, and that's a decision of the county that was at the time, the decision of the county commissioners in signing on to, we're agreeing to participate, here's the number of seats we, we're going to fill, and here's how we're going to fill it within the brackets of elected and appointed officials, people with some measure of responsibility. And we didn't get into the qualifications of alternates, but really to make sure that, you know, the, the people that were at the table had some relationship to the work being done. Capital planning, roadway planning, et cetera, et cetera. But how a commission, how a county commission decided to, to, you know, cut the cake up was really up to them. And you may want to go back to that and say, does this, does this, in, in our county, does this configuration represent us well? Or is there a different way we'd fill the seats? And I think to a large degree, and I don't want to, I'm not involved in the day to day and haven't been for many years, but, and to a large degree, it would seem that the other, if one county wanted to change its composition in a deliberate way, the other four counties would probably go along with it. As long again, as the people that are being brought to the table are people who have electoral or administrative responsibilities.
So Hunter, I think that's the issue right now. We do have a county, Giaga County, that has asked for a change in their representation from three commissioners to two commissioners and a county engineer. It is currently in the ratification process and two counties have declined to ratify. And so Giaga County is unable to move forward with its, right, with, with its membership as it desires because two counties have not ratified it.
And even though the board has approved it.
Board has approved it as a majority. And then the next part is the ratification process. And I believe Cuyahoga has ratified it, Lorraine has ratified it, and Giaga has of course ratified it.
So I guess I'd like to ask the two on the phone, what, again, I feel like you're saying what we want, which is that you shouldn't have to ratify, it should be up to the commissioners. And maybe it needs to be that those commissioners need to actually take a vote, you know, and, and that way it's clear that that is what they're doing. So it could be two to one, but still. But I don't understand why there's a feeling that the ratification process is necessary because it's awkward for other counties to be taking a NOAC issue to our, in our case, county council, you know, when they have nothing to do with the representation of Giaga County. They approved it because it was sort of a nothing issue, but it just doesn't make any sense for us to take the time and energy to create legislation, to walk through it all. It really should be up to each county through their leaderships, you know, to decide what their group is. And then the board, obviously the board would approve it as well.
And it seems to me that Morris, you, you, you just want more flexibility, I think. Don't you? I mean.
Well, I'm, I'm basically suggesting, again, going back to how the organization was reconstituted in the 90s, that each county commission, these are, these are creatures of the county commissions acting together, five county commissions acting together, county, now four county commissions and a county executive acting together in unison to create a council of government serving their, their collective interests. But how the, the county commissions are the appointing authorities in that model? And how they decided to appoint, again, within the brackets of, of, of professional competence, basically. So two commissioners and a county engineer makes, to me, makes perfectly good sense. And I don't, again, without stepping in an area I don't know the politics of, I don't see what the objection is to, to a Cuyahoga County shifting its, its framing to say it's two commissioners and a, and a county engineer as opposed to three commissioners, as long as the four elected officials agree that that's the way Cuyahoga County is going to present itself to the larger body. And I've always thought having the county engineers, not only members of the TAC, but members of the board is generally a good idea because they are responsible for a lot of the money that flows through NOAC and do a lot of the, the work in their respective counties. And so having, having that engineering expertise at the board level is probably a good thing.
Makes sense. Thank, thank you, Hunter. Commissioner DeBorck, you had a comment?
Well, yeah, I have a lot of thoughts, but a couple of comments. Wouldn't it be just easier to change the bylaws that each, you don't have to ratify for the composition of each county or, you know, executive council?
Okay, all right. That sounds vaguely familiar, like two months ago.
Commissioner Bever, you had?
No, I just, to that point, county commissioners, we already point folks to a bunch of boards all over our counties, right? Whether it be community colleges, whether it be this board, that board, no offense to me, I view NOAC as no different. We have a reorg meeting, you know, every beginning of January to start the year. That's where we pick our president of the board. That's where we say our designation for this board, that board, this voting member. NOAC would be no different. It would be another line item on that agenda where we say county commissioners will appoint the following five, in Lake County's situation, the following five individuals to represent themselves on the NOAC. And then they will choose their alternates, you know, or however we do it. But I don't, I don't think it's.
Very good. All right, Bonnie, you had some thoughts?
Yeah, I, I think we're all saying the same thing. So, you know, rather than keep saying the same thing.
Right.
Let's maybe agree on what we want our next steps to be in, in all of this.
So go ahead.
So one question though, if we were to remove the ratification, do we have to ratify the removal of the ratification? Like do all five counties have to vote to remove the ratification or can we just remove it?
So that was an interpretation by our previous council that the ratification removal had to be ratified. But we, Liz and I have looked at it, and I'm not an attorney, but Liz is, it's not specified in Article nine that that has to happen. I think the previous council interpreted it that way because the whole idea of ratification is to make sure that everybody's approving. So if you're going to remove it, shouldn't everybody approve? But again, seven, one lawyer, seven opinions, whatever.
So can we make a motion to remove the ratification process and put it into the, the selection of board members into the hands of each county, subject to their county commissioners voting on those members?
Love that idea. My question is, how does that work then for the city of Cleveland that has eight members, four of which are from the mayor's office, four of which are from council? So who selects that delegation?
So it would, my suggestion would, it would not be the county.
No, no way.
We can figure out some language on, you know, whether it's four administrative appointees, four legislative appointees from the city of Cleveland.
For what it's worth, if it's four from the mayor's office and four from council, then I would suspect the mayor would be responsible for the appointment of four and then council. the mayor would be responsible for the appointment of four and then council would be responsible for the other appointment of four.
Although Cuyahoga County is going to be a little different too, because we also have a council and an executive and right now we have three members appointed by the executive and one appointed by council. And then there are all the other communities that follow the uh, the regions and everything that were talked about that there is debate whether we appoint them or not.
Well, then for Cuyahoga County, there's the eleven suburban.
No.
Can you put that um, chart back up again? It's just easier.
No.
And at one point, if I can see the spreadsheet again, please.
Yeah, and, and the history and, and um, Hunter or Commissioner Hambley can probably speak to this a little bit better. Um, but in Cuyahoga County and um, actually in Lorraine, the, there are several cities that have automatic representation. Um, and that was based on the size of the cities to ensure, as the federal legislation required, that you have representation that is, you know, fair and not just, if you did it by the county, a county like Giaga County could choose to appoint all township trustees from unurbanized areas that we do not receive any funding for. And, and if that's what they want to do, then that's what they could do, but I would say that you would have to think about, does that accurately reflect the population? And in their area, it probably would because they've got more people in the un- um, incorporated areas. But they, the, the, the incorporated areas lose the representation and that's the intent of the federal funding. I mean, our, 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 our organization is unique in that we are, we are created by five counties, in five counties. The urbanized and the rural areas, but we receive no money for the rural areas. We only receive money for the urbanized areas. ODOT receives the money from the feds for the rural areas. So that's always been an awkward um, thing i- in terms of representation. Um, but I just want to make sure that we don't lose one way or the other, the, the thought about how we address. We currently allow the rural areas to use the funding of NOACA. So they can use our funding, but we don't get funding on their behalf. So it, it raises those questions when you have representation changes. And I'm just saying those would probably come up depending on how the um, you know, how how representation would be determined, but I think the board and the governance committee could very carefully delineate, as we talked earlier in the meeting, about the representation criteria. And as long as you, I think, control that to some level, we should not have any issues.
Mr. Chair, to Mr. Morrison's point.
Yeah.
And this is the sticking point on a lot of these things. In some regards, we are an MPO, some regards, we are a council of governments. And as I'm hearing, the definition of a council of governments is that the counties and the commissions, if you will, came together to say, we want to work together on these things.
Now, let me, let me be clear. You are, you are a council of governments that has been appointed by the, by the federal government to be an MPO. The MPO is a designation. Now, Eastgate, representing Mahoning and Trumbull and Ashtabula County, is a, is a council of governments of three counties, but an MPO of only two. It's only a MP, only function as an MPO in Medina, in Mahoning and Trumbull County because of the population requirements of metro, metropolitan area. Ashtabula is not part of the, the Youngstown Warren Sharon MP, uh, metropolitan area. And in fact, there's a county um, in, in Pennsylvania, I think it's, I think it's Butler. Uh, Sharon, the city of Sharon gets a certain amount of bus funding through Eastgate because it is part of the metropolitan area. You are a designated economic development district for the five counties. Eastgate is the same for its three counties. Um, you're just designated water quality body uh, for your five counties, as is Eastgate. When it gets down to Akron and Canton, it gets a lot more complicated because the Akron, the Portage and Summit County Metropolitan Planning Organization, AM, uh, AMATS is actually an office of the mayor, part of the mayor's office of City of Akron. Staff gets their paychecks from the City of Akron. The um, SCAT, SCAT's the um, uh, um, the Metropolitan Planning Organization for Canton, Canton area is an office of the uh, County Planning Commission. But, but it's a designee, it's a designation. So the feds have determined that this five county area uh, is adequately represented um, uh, represents a piece of the, of, of a metropolitan area. Um, they could easily have gone back and said, no, you gotta be seven counties. Uh, and as Steve remembers, that's, that was always part of a debate over the years and the early years is, and the original transportation planning was done for a seven county area. Uh, but frankly, um, Akron didn't want to be part of Cleveland, uh, still doesn't. Um, so this is the way of the deal has been worked out. But first and foremost, you're a council of governments created by five counties coming together to do various things in common, including transportation planning, which is MPO function, water quality planning, which is EPPA function, economic development, you do air quality planning through, through the uh, transportation side. And you do now economic development planning, which is a very, very powerful tool to collaborate for regional economic development initiatives. And I'm very glad that you've been able to do that because Eastgate uses that tool, uh, the Comprehensive Economic Development Study, um, which they periodically do as a very important part of regional coherence, coherence and presenting the um, those three counties to the state and federal government as a coherent unit. Uh, and as again, Eastgate has also been designated for, for three counties as a branch or as an office of the Appalachian Regional Commission. Because they're, that part of the state is part of Appalachia where you're, you're not. But the idea of a council of governments having multiple functions, multiple funding sources, and the question becomes, is this council, is the structure of this council of governments viewed by the, by the participating counties um, as a fair and equitable um, grouping? Um, that represents each of their individual interests at the county level fairly to the, to the body as a whole. And um, I'm just looking at the way, you know, you look at Cleveland, for instance, that represents the essentially the politics of Cleveland. It's half the council, half the mayor's office, but several of the members are designate, designated by, by position. The head of capital projects, which is your engineering, formerly your engineering office and your planning department, and then one other member of the, of the um, cabinet that that um, the mayor decides can spend the time working on NOACA and then four council members, which I assume represents the various com- committees of council that pass on um, uh, capital issues and planning issues. Um, but again, I think from my distance, it looks like it's a, it's a very nuanced structure be- between, within and between the counties, but tweaking it uh, to make it um, better or more, more, more accurately reflective, um, perhaps the township trustee idea is an important uh, township representation is, is important in some of the outer counties. Um, but um, again, I'd be, I'd be careful to, to see it primarily as a council of governments, which then does certain functions and is designated by the federal government. Um, the, the US Department of Transportation, the uh, US EPA and the, and the US Economic Development Administration to do things at the local and regional level uh, in par- in participation and in cooperation with the, the appropriate state agen- state agencies and um, with the um, and the one, the one agency, Grace, in looking at the state, I think you might want to consider is the Ohio Department of Development. Maybe more relevant in many ways than, than the Turnpike Authority, or it could be an addition, but he, but we found in, in uh, my work in, in Youngstown, that uh, uh, ODOD is a key actor in a lot of funding um, opportunities to advance economic development projects and the work of the, of uh, Eastgate as a, as an economic development district. But otherwise, it looks, it's a very, it's a nuanced and thoughtfully constructed group that.
Yeah, no, that, that's a good point, Hunter. Many of our colleagues' organizations, and I believe Eastgate is structured this way, where they have many functions and so they have a board that is for their entire council of government.
Yes.
They have a separate board within that for the MPO or for the EDD. Um, and therefore it's, it's determined by the function of, um, you know, with MPOs, that means that whoever's on the MPO board, I believe Columbus is structured this way too, because their MPO is very different than um, their, their overall structure. Um, but so I guess my point is that there's a lot of different ways to do this and there's a lot of solutions um, that we could explore to sort of address any of the kind of concerns people might end up having um, with some of the changes.
So. Yeah, to your, to your point, the four counties of uh, Maho- of um, Summit, Portage, Stark, um, um, Wayne, Wayne, Wayne County, those four are a part of a council of governments, uh, NEFCO, which does, which is designated as the Economic Development District and Water Quality. So within those four counties, you've got um, a council of governments, but doesn't, is not an MPO. The MPOs are the, the, the two um, uh, one representing Akron and Portage, Summit and Portage County, one representing Stark County.
Yeah, I was actually thinking of the example of Eastgate where they have Ashtabula, Mahoning and Trumbull.
Correct.
And um, Trumbull and Mahoning are the MPO.
Right.
But Ashtabula is not, so they have different memberships.
That's right, and the, the TAC, the TAC, I don't believe, I don't believe the TAC and, and Eastgate represents, includes Ashtabula because it's not part of a transportation there. And so every, you know, each of these communities, each of these metro regions has come up with its own of structure that, that works for it.
Miss Chair.
Yes, please.
So I think there's an appetite for us to remove the ratification feature of all of our delegations. And to the point of the criticisms, right, wrong and different, of NOACA being unelected, whatever it is, bureaucrats. By, by allowing the county commissioners in the outer four counties, let's say, to appoint their delegations and then having county executive, you know, and the county executive can adopt what's currently there or not. And then the mayor and then the council, all of those individuals would be elected officials.
Mm-hmm.
And so therefore, what, they can be held accountable for their decisions or not by the people, right? Like I said, as a county commissioner, every January, we gotta sit down and we gotta appoint a bunch of people and put a bunch of people on boards. I think by doing this, this allows that accountability and in my opinion removes the, you know, the unelected part of that criticism, if you will.
And that's why I go back, I think that's a very good point because it, it takes you back to who are, who was the appointing authority? The four, the, the elected officials in the four county, in the five counties. They are the appointing authority and they are all elected. Um, uh, and when the, when it blew up in the early nineties, Steve remembers, um, it was the county commissions that said, oh, wait a minute, uh, what, what the hell is going on here? And it was the county commissions ultimately that came together and said, we're going to have a NOACA, but it's going to be much more fair and equitable and professionally run, et cetera, et cetera, which included staffing changes and all, structural changes and the like. Because they felt accountable for the actions of this body. And so I think you keep, need to come back to that. Who, 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 who makes the decisions ultimately? The four county, the elected officials in the four counties in the city of Cleveland, five counties in the city of Cleveland.
Mr. Chair, yes, Commissioner Beveridge.
I don't have an appetite, I guess everything comes around about appetite, I apologize, except for lunch, to change the board composition. I personally do not have an appetite. I know Debbie, you want to add one more member to Cuyahoga. Is there, but i- is there an appetite beyond that to change the proportionality or the board composition as it's currently identified numbers wise?
No, but thank you for acknowledging that.
Acknowledge.
On the record, uh, then could I make a motion that for Giaga County, their delegation be determined by the county commissioners annually before the first board meeting of NOACA? For Lake County, that their delegation be determined by the county commissioners annually before the first board meeting of NOACA? For Medina County, that their delegation be determined by the board of county commissioners annually before the first meeting of NOACA? And for Lorraine County, that the first, that the delegation be determined by the board of county commissioners before the first meeting of NOACA? For the city of Cleveland's four members from the mayor's office be determined by the mayor. For the four members from council be determined by Cleveland City Council. And that for Cuyahoga County, that of their four members be determined by the Cuyahoga County Executive prior to the first NOACA meeting of January annually.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Jim DeBorck.
For this, for discussion.
Discussion now, yes.
Okay.
I think that spells it out very clear and it just represents what Cuyahoga and the, and the city of Cleveland has. Rather lengthy, but it's, it really clears it up and that's why I second it.
Okay, alright, sounds good. We, let's discuss further, yes.
Yes, there's a couple of things in there. Um, what happens to all the other Cuyahoga County members besides just the four? Who makes the determination?
I guess my.
That state or, or?
Well, I guess my motion was only for those.
Those changes.
Those areas. The regional authorities are, I think, spelled out, sewer district, RTA, port. Uh, what else we got? That's it. State of Ohio is spelled out, ODOT, Ohio EPA, Ohio Turnpike. So the organization as a whole has already made those determinations for those areas of our board composition. My motion relates to county government, Cuyahoga County suburban regions, which would fall under then county government, I would assume. Actually, I didn't even make a motion on that. So theoretically.
That's why I made.
That portion stays the same. The Cuyahoga suburban regions stays the same. Once again, if that were to be changed, then there would be another motion, another conversation. That's not my concern. City of Cleveland has been addressed, Giaga's been addressed, Lake's been addressed, Lorraine's been addressed, Medina's been addressed. Cuyahoga suburban regions, that would stay the same. The regionals would stay the same.
Okay, more discussion, Bonnie?
So, uh, I, I'm, I'm going to speak a little bit for Lorraine County and I might be uh, speaking out of school, but Grace, if I remember correctly, the city of Lorraine and city of Illyria are specific because of they're the largest population, city population and they're.
At the time this was created.
Yep.
Yes.
And they're dictated. So and our bylaws state that because they have them listed as this i- in this way. But there's nothing in the membership that says it has to be the largest municipalities. We just chose to do that. So I guess what Commissioner Beveridge is saying, that Lorraine County, they have three, seven members that are, it could be anybody, not necessarily from Lorraine or Illyria. And I, I, I would think those cities might take exception to that.
And, and, Mr. Chair.
Please.
Then the county commissioners would be held accountable at the very next action. In my opinion, yes, if they're, if, if you're going to ignore the two largest cities as far as being a part of that, and maybe who knows, the. as far as being a part of that, and maybe who knows, the the mayor of Lorraine or the mayor of Illyria wants nothing to do with coming down to NOACA, right? And so they may not care. But that's what I'm automatically automatically putting in a specific city into this mix would be removed by that motion. It would be the responsibility of the county commissioners in each of these counties, and then the county executive, et cetera, et cetera. But yes, I, once again, I think that there is a level of accountability. If that's a problem in that community, then, you know, then that then that's a political conversation that the voters can still hold people accountable for the representation of this council of governments, which is designated as an MPO.
So we're we're still discussing, I know, the the motion. Just a question that I have for NOA, for Grace and Liz, let's say. Does the motion, would it appear, would it jeopardize in any way our federal requirements for our MPO governance?
I don't believe so. I think it would be consistent with, again, depending on, there could be some concerns when the actual appointments are made, but I think that can be addressed by the Governance Committee as well through criteria. And at the January meeting, the board gets to vote on those. So I think that there's, it would be fine. The one thing I do want to bring to your attention in terms of representation, and I say this more to say, we actually don't have it so bad here at NOACA. My, some of my colleagues in the state, like Morpsy and OKI, have over a hundred board members. So I I just say that, and I think OKI has close to 200. Though, we're only trying to worry about 45.
And that's why, that's why I took that conversation off the table first, right? Are we good? We're good?
Clarifying questions. Who does actually choose, under the Cuyahoga suburban regions, like who chooses the West Shore Region representative?
So you you can, again, argue what's in the code versus what's not in the code, what was history and how it was done prior to the executive form of government. The ones that were in the county regions were elected. So there were actually elections held by NOACA.
By NOACA?
By NOACA.
So explain how that worked. So every mayor in a region said, I'm interested, and then the NOACA board voted on who got it?
No, the the regions, say there's five mayors in a region.
Yeah.
One mayor would be nominated. The other four would vote yes or no on that person representing them on the NOACA board.
So they vote within their region?
Within their.
Again, NOACA is not voting.
No, but I mean, NOACA conducted the election. We would send out.
Say.
We would send out the the ballots, yeah. And we would count the ballots. But we got out of that business, my understanding is, when they went to a a executive form of government. And at that time, those regions take recommendations from, I mean, yeah, the regions will nominate somebody. The county executive takes that rec- recommendation or doesn't take that recommendation, but the county executive then provides the, you know, the the the, I guess, the the appointment.
Oh, so the county executive essentially does.
But not to Cleveland Heights, city of Euclid.
Oh, no, not the cities. I get that. Because they're clearly less than a cities, yeah. The regions are the executives.
I will say it's been, it's been sketchy since the executive form of government. I will say that we never had any documentation of board members being appointed to the NOACA board until, in terms of its full body, until the current executive. We did have some appointments made when people left the board. So when people left the board, the prior executives would send us something saying that they're replacing that with so and so.
Yeah.
But the understanding was, my understanding was, that they received those nominations from the, it was in consultation with the regions, but that the executive would put that forward on behalf of the regions. There was no more election.
So to make it more clear, can I add an amendment?
Yes, I I have another one as well. So if you'd like me to amend, I will.
To to just clarify what I think you're saying happens, that there would be a recommendation or a discussion with the region, but ultimately that the executive would choose the representative of each region. I'm leaving the cities alone as they are for now, the four, but the regions, and I'm also leaving alone the regional authorities. But the regions would be like another, it would all be in our sort of pot as the executive, like the other counties are now in this proposal. However, the wording works on that.
Mr. Chair, to be clear, it sounds like the executive already has that ability that I'm seeking.
So I'm clarifying.
Yes, yes.
Making it so that that is the process that is adopted with this.
Yeah, again, the elections have not happened since the elect, since the executive form of government came into existence.
Okay, but it sounds like that's not written. So I feel like if we're putting together something, I'm trying to make it better for you that there is a defined process that, again, is similar to what the other counties do.
No more silent, no more silent rules.
And then my other just question, clarifying really quick, is so going back to Illyria and Lorraine, this vote, if it goes forward, will go to the Executive Committee and to the full board, right? So at the full board, those cities have the ability to challenge and or ask for a change that the board would ultimately approve if they decide they want to be listed.
Yeah, I mean, I will say that some of the cities, the members of those regions have expressed concern since the change that they don't get to elect. So I know that that has been an issue where they're wondering why we're not electing anymore. And it was, you know.
But even when, well, I guess not. You're saying when they elected, the county commissioners of Cuyahoga County at the time did just did not have any say in it.
Correct.
It was the group.
That was correct, right. It was the county commissioners did not then have to approve it. The election was held by NOACA, and the results were then confirmed.
So I'm going to add my amendment, and to clarify the process, as it sounds like it now happens. And again, if the board decides they want to have a different discussion at the board meeting with all those members present, then obviously we'll have that discussion.
Mr. Chair, why didn't you make that amendment?
Why don't you? And we could add it to your motion.
So if I may, I would like to amend my motion that all things said prior stay the same. And I have two amendments with regards to the Cuyahoga Suburban Regional Board Members. The West Shore Region, the Southwest Region, the South Central Region, the Cuyahoga Region, the Chagrin Southeast Region, the Heights Region, and the Hillcrest Region, that the member from those regions be appointed by the Cuyahoga County Executive. All things prior said to be done without ratification by any other entity, if you will.
That sounds, sounds good. You're good with that, Debbie? Okay, all right. And, yeah, Bonnie?
Maybe a little clarification on that. I'd like to have a separate a separate I'm sorry, not a, not an amendment, but just a a separate motion to eliminate the ratification rather than including it in this one as an amendment.
Wasn't wasn't the, wasn't that in your original motion?
My amendment is that these decisions
Yeah.
do not need ratified.
Correct, yes, but I would like to make a separate motion that to move, remove ratification.
We're going to look crazy here, guys.
For all other, okay, so I think we have to do this motion in second, and then we can come back to that one. Make a separate motion would be that one. Correct?
Couldn't we just include it in in the the main motion?
So.
Why do you?
As long as it's in there.
Okay. We're trying to do two things. Make a motion regarding the membership. And make a motion regarding ratification. I I think we can do both of those things. I don't think we have to add ratification to yours because when we actually, you know, it it, when this makes its way for vote or whatever, we would take ratification first. So that then what would happen afterwards wouldn't, to the, to Article Four, wouldn't need ratification. We should have a second on the motion to amend the original motion and then vote on the amendment to the motion before voting on the original motion, and then take your motion separately.
But we're, again, amending your two amendments to only one amendment, and I'm seconding that.
Yeah, I I guess I made a motion, and then I amended that motion.
But you amended it twice. We're removing the ratif- or the ratification.
It's one, it's one amendment.
I had two comments, two.
It was one motion to amend based on those two items.
Yeah.
But the motion to amend is just on what.
It's to the suburban region.
Correct, so.
I'm seconding that amendment.
So right now, we need to take a vote on the motion to amend.
All right.
Okay.
All right. Do you want to, I know you're not making the motion, just give us the motion, and then we'll have somebody actually so move it or something.
So this is a motion to amend the original motion, which was that all of the ones that you listed, the counties are, make their appointments. So it is to amend, a motion to amend the original motion to include also that Cuyahoga County is responsible for appointing the suburban regions. So we can have a voice vote, but it is a motion onto the amend, and then we'll go back to the original motion as amended.
Okay, without ratification.
We'll take that separately.
All right, who wants to do, take this one? Okay, Commissioner DeVorek? And then we have a second?
A second. You you made the first by making the motion to amend. You seconded it, so we're taking a vote.
All right. All right, then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, that one passes, and now now what's the second?
The amendment that passed to the motion.
So now we're back to the emotion, the motion as amended.
Unless we have further.
Were there any nays?
Okay. Y'all voted yes.
Okay, who who made that first motion? Was it?
I made the motion.
Morris, okay.
Seconded the amendment.
And then we got Debbie.
He seconded.
Seconded.
Yeah, he seconded the original motion. I seconded the amendment that we just voted on and approved unanimously.
Now, I made another amendment to add the words without ratification.
Well, I I take that as a separate motion. So we have to deal with the motion in front of us, which is about the county's ability to appoint their members. And so that's still open for discussion unless you're ready to take a vote. And then when that business has concluded, we can make the motion for removing ratification.
Okay, so who wants to take this one?
No, we're just. We are there.
I already made the motion, the original motion, Commissioner DeVorek seconded it.
Yeah, we're ready for a motion almost.
Ready for a vote.
We're ready to take the vote?
And the motion is amended.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Please say aye. Aye, okay. All right, anyone opposed? No one's opposed, okay.
Okay, make your motion.
Sure.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the bylaws of ratifications by each of the counties for changing of the bylaws.
Remove.
Removed, yes, to remove ratification.
All right, Brenda couldn't hear you, Bonnie, just give that to us again and.
I'd like to make a motion to remove the ratification of all the counties for changing, changes to the bylaws.
Okay, can I have a second, please?
Second.
Commissioner Beveridge, second. All right, any discussion on that?
Just to be clear, to remove the ratification requirement, I think is.
Would it be helpful if I read the the section as is?
It would be helpful.
So this is Article Nine regarding amendments to the code. This Code of Regulations may be altered, amended, or repealed only by a majority vote of the Board of Directors. However, any matters relating to Article Four of this Code of Regulations shall be altered, amended, or repealed only upon written approval of each county of the NOACA area. Alteration, amendment, or repeal of this code may be initiated by the board either at a special meeting called for that purpose or at any regular meeting where notice of such purpose was given at the immediately preceding regular meeting. So we're just talking about removing that sentence regarding ratification of Article Four.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, then we're ready to take the vote on this one? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, anyone opposed? No, okay. All right, you got all that, Brenda? Okay.
You need to give me a call.
And then just like, you know, for, I guess, housekeeping. So what we've done here today goes to the Executive Committee in November?
Correct.
Which is what, November fourteenth? So it's really coming up. All right, and then and then Executive Committee, if they approve, would it go to the December board meeting? For for their approval? Okay, all right. All right, very good.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I'm I'm in the mood to get stuff done. May I bring up a different topic?
Sure.
With regards to the agenda, as I've seen it in the past, it typically has action items, right? Is is what we're discussing is what is taking up a fair amount of time. Can we, I assume a policy would need to come out of somewhere, whether it be governance or executive, that gives the chair the ability to, at the beginning of each action item, either, you know, take, you know, ask, can we move straight to a motion and a vote on this item? And then let the board decide, do we want to go through the whole presentation and discussion part? Or can we move straight to a motion, which for a lot of the things that are unanimous, we would all take a vote, yes, move straight to the voting part of this action item. And if the majority of the board, that way, the Governance Committee, the Executive Committee isn't making decisions that would, what goes into a consent agenda, what doesn't go into a consent agenda, right? The entire board then would have a votes, a voice on, here's an action item. Do we want to have a discussion on this, or can we move, can we move straight to the vote? And then somebody make a motion, yes, let's move straight to the vote? Yes.
I guess I'm just a little bit concerned because would that then be a majority vote to do a consent per item? And I think that that might become a bit of a challenge because we could have big arguments around the board of if there's very close that most people, half the people want to discuss it and half of them don't want to discuss it. That we're spending all this time discussing if we discuss it.
And then that argument would come out in the discussion of the motion, right? So there would be an opportunity, for example, let's say that there's an issue and there's seventeen people, four just going straight to the vote, and fourteen people that say, no, I want to discuss this. Then in discussion, those fourteen people would have the opportunity to say, no, this is the topic we're discussing, this is an important topic. It needs to be debated in public amongst this organization. And they could make their case for then the majority of the board. Once again, what I'm also trying to avoid is the five of us in governance or the four, five, six of us in executive saying, okay, this needs to go to this consent agenda, but maybe the majority of the board doesn't want it in consent agenda and would like to then be able to discuss it. And I think that instead of coming through all those if comes, if we simply just before every action item, allow the chair to say, do we want to move right through? And just vote? And if it's unanimous, it's unanimous. And if there's ten, twelve, fifteen, twenty people that don't want to move right through.
I'm just, I I'm just concerned that could prolong the meetings. And I I'm just wondering if there's a more efficient way to do it. In that maybe the Executive Committee makes the decision, but then when the agenda is sent out, I don't know if this works or not, but board members have an opportunity before the board meeting to say, hey, this is really important. I would like to discuss it. And then it can move from consent to, or at least then we know going into a meeting that these two items are the things that seem to have some groundswell of interest versus going through every item, taking a vote on whether you're going to vote on it or not. It just, it seems like it's going to be a challenge to me.
There, so let me revise my idea. When do the agendas come out? A week in advance, yes?
Correct.
Then can the chair have the discretion to say any item that is not, you know, that has not, that he has may not been notified of, that would like to be discussed, will then be able to go through to a vote? That way, all the board members have a week to talk to the chair and say, I would like to discuss this.
Well.
I I would say that's getting close to violating sunshine laws. I mean, the discussion of the business of the board has to happen in the public.
Got it.
You know, and and in my my opinion on this, since I've had the opportunity to be a president of this board, you know, we always take the action items first. And then the presentation items are usually at the end of the meeting and and, you know, based on, you know, how much. based on, you know, how much time we have left or if we're going overtime, um, you know, we have made that decision, you know, the, the chair has made that decision to not, uh, you know, consider some of the presentation items or postpone them for another meeting, you know, just, uh, uh, to save, uh, to save time. Because as you know, you know, we start losing board members, uh, the longer these meetings go, and then we run into problems where if there's something left to vote on, we don't have a quorum anymore. So, you know, we, I think, I think the chair's, one of the chair's responsibilities is to keep the, uh, meeting moving along as efficiently as we possibly can. Um, you never know really how much discussion is going to come up on a item, uh, until, until you're actually in the meeting. So, um, but I, I, I do believe that the chair, I, I feel that the chair does have enough flexibility to, uh, you know, move a, a presentation item at least to another meeting. Um, and we've done that, haven't we? I mean, we, we've done that, so, but I, 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 I guess I would agree with you, Debbie, too, um, that, that it might cause problems, uh, if we are, you know, opening up to discussion whether or not to discuss an item or, or, or not, uh, that, that could actually unfortunately work against us and take more time. That's my, my thought on that, Commissioner.
Fair.
I did want to, um, affirm what Liz said, that our, our counsel, Ryan Gambala, also said that when we discussed it last, that you have to have the opportunity to discuss it in public, that you cannot not bring it up for discussion in public, at least the opportunity.
When we do the action items, I think there's usually like, what's the action item screen, and then there's the background screen, and then there's a presentation screen, and then at the end it's an action screen, right? And sometimes, some of the information is very wonderful and necessary, and other times nobody says a word and then, and it's unanimous. And so that's what I'm saying, is, is, is it possible to skip past the background and the presentation and go straight to the action? To your point, Debbie, I, and yes, we would create then two discussion sessions, which probably was not in the best interest. So could we simply state that if any one member of the board wished to go through the background and presentation part of an action item, then we do?
I, I, I think.
And if nobody, then we go right to the action.
You're right in the, I mean, I think the, the line of thinking of going from the initial action slide to the vote can happen, and then you have to ask, is there any discussion? So at that time, if a board member wants the presentation or the discussion, they can ask for it, is what you're saying, right?
Yes, yes.
I believe that does work.
But I believe that would need to go before the action, because if we go right to the action and somebody makes a motion in a second, to Debbie's point, if the majority of the board says, move on, approve, then there's, you know what I mean?
But I think they always have to ask for discussion.
But is it majority, or is it if one person says they want to talk about it, then we talk about it? Yeah, so then there's no vote to see if we, or don't, just do.
Correct, correct. The chair would have the prerogative that if one, if any board member asks to have.
The presentation.
The presentation, if you, with the background and the presentation be gone through, then we do that. If not, then hearing, hearing none, can I get a motion to approve said action item? So moved, second, gone.
That makes more sense to me.
Okay, do we need to make a motion or something like that to amend that?
That's procedural.
Okay.
So you can give me that direction. I take the direction, and I will, uh, describe that at the executive committee and then prepare the December agenda in that manner and explain to the board what we're doing.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Alternates, right now.
You're getting it all done, huh?
Let's go, let's go. Alternates, right now, we have elected officials, no, for, for board members. We have elected officials or, what is it, administrators in transportation, environment, environmental, okay? Right, now this is different than transit, right? So this is different than the MPO, but for NOACA purposes, we're no longer just in the arena of transit, we're in environmental issues and in economic development issues. So then can we change this to say, the goal for representation is to bring the board's discussion of our initially elected officials and regional administrators of the NOACA area concerned with transportation, environmental planning, and economic development, as well as all alternates have to qualify for that as well?
I think we can. That sounds reasonable, that clarifies.
I think that more aligns with what our actual charge is.
Yeah.
Then my next question for Liz, sorry, would be, if we do that, is a member of an elected official's staff considered to be meeting that criteria?
I think it depends on the staff.
I would just, this isn't going to answer your question, but I'm just going to lead with that. Um, keep in mind, what we're looking at is our Code of Regulations, and much like policy versus procedure, we're talking about high-level goals, and sometimes it gets implemented, you know, I wouldn't put too much that's prescriptive in here, because ideally, we're not constantly changing our Code of Regulations, but we do want to meet the goals of the organization. And, you know, we do have some things that are general handshake agreements or something like that. So I just, I'm, I will draft something based on what you're talking about, but in terms of, does a member of a staff or of an elected official meet that? You interpret that differently, and I don't know if we want to.
Something in there.
I think we can come up with some criteria, and that that criteria, you can either give it to me as the guideline when we put the January roster together to make sure that when I'm having the conversations with members, I've got something to refer to, or you could put it in here as an appendix or an amendment or.
Yeah, I, I think I would prefer to have it spelled out so that this ambiguity, right? And I also don't have a problem whatsoever with a member of an elected official's staff, which I think covers most of the folks that might also be alternates appointed here, right? I think that in that situation, that will cover all the bases that we want. Either the elected official, a member of their staff, or their organization, if you will, a member of their organization, or a regional administrator of an area of concern with NOACA, transportation, environmental planning, and economic development, as well as the alternates have to fit that bill to.
So are you saying that?
We have one more governance meeting, correct, before the executive.
We've got one, yeah, November fourteenth.
Vote on it there, but we can continue to discuss it for a minute since obviously Bonnie has to.
Sorry.
Just to make sure I understand what you're saying.
See you, Bonnie.
If, is what you're saying that the language would reflect the ability of staff to be a member or to be an alternate?
Ah, that could be the clarification for the alternate.
That's what, exactly.
Yes.
That's what I thought you were trying to say, but seeing it in this section makes it about the member, in which case then you could appoint, if you get to appoint five members from, um, Lake County, you could make them all staff people and none could be elected officials.
Yeah, right.
And I don't think that's the intent.
I think, yes, that would be the carve out for the alternates, that could be a member of the elected officials.
We could do for the next meeting is we could prepare some criteria based on what we're hearing that helps, uh, better align the alternates.
Yes, so I guess that would be my only, if we were to do something in November, I would like to change to recognize economic development for board members.
Yep.
And that the alternates also meet the same criteria as this, as well as a member of an elected official's.
Team, right, yeah.
Organization, right? Like, I, let, let's say somebody, I, I, you know, and then I don't know, in the county commissioner's office, I don't know, somebody else within the county I could have go, right, well, I would say an employee.
But I still.
I, I guess I don't want to carve it in that hard, though. Like, if there's somebody from county government that we would want to send that may not directly be our employee to the commissioners or a part of our staff, right, but I, I think it's still of the elected officials, and this is for the alternate.
Or, but again, you may ultimately want to have an alternate, depending who is a township employee, right?
Right.
Or another city's employee as opposed to your county employee.
Yeah, I, I, it could be, although I don't know that you would, it could, I guess.
We could talk about, what, what, behind the scenes, we'll talk about all the options that we can think of and the questions that have posed, been posed when the January seating takes place, and bring that fully back to, for now, we can change, um, this to.
Economic development should be simple, just a question of the alternates. I would like to tighten that up.
But it does sound like we should have a definition of an alternate.
I would love that, yes.
Yep, that'd be a good idea.
I mean, Commissioner Beverage and I have had that discussion last year. Um, it, it comes up a lot.
Good. All right, we got a lot done today, didn't we?
We did.
My goodness. Well, I'm not surprised.
Can't wait to see that motion.
Yeah.
Just trying to make sure nothing is left silent, and that ambiguity is removed from the conversation.
Thank you.
Well, very good. I think we're headed in the right direction, certainly moving forward here. Okay, Grace, did you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay.
But does Liz have something?
Well, I just want to clarify, um, uh, how, how this is going to go. Um, so what your motion does is make some amendments to the code, obviously. So what I would suggest is I can draft those red lines as, as best as I can, in the appropriate sections, meeting your requirements, and I bring those specific edits back in November for you all to review, and I, I would say vote on again, and then that we can take those in December to the board, so that we're very, then we'll be explicit about exactly what it is we're changing.
Will be good.
Could you send those out with the agenda?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, of course.
Ahead.
It would be in the memos, right?
Perfect.
Excellent. All right, very good. Um, do we have any other, uh, reports or updates for today's meeting? Okay, any old business? Any new business? Okay, all right, I'm going to adjourn today's meeting. Thanks for coming, everyone, and we will meet again here on November fourteenth, uh, from ten AM. Oh, we have to vote on the adjourn? Okay.
We do. Debbie made a motion.
I was just trying to save time.
I'll second the motion.
All right, who, you made the motion, Debbie? And we, Commissioner Beverage seconds that. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, we're adjourned, thank you.